Good evening. I'm Isidoro Nieto, President of Wesaco ISD Board of Trustees. This public hearing is being conducted in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least three business days prior to the date of the meeting. A record of this meeting is being made and a recording, my fault, of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time is now 5:32 PM and I will call this meeting to order. I will now begin the roll call, even though we don't have to have a quorum for a public hearing. Coach Armado Cuellar, Mr. Eddie Serna, and myself, Mr. Nieto. Some of the other board members will be arriving in a few minutes except for maybe one that was in a had a small accident. But we're ready to get started. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, Mr. David.
So there is no public comment who signed up, just FYI? And so I'm going to go right through our presentation. So this is a public hearing for the proposed 25-26 tax rate. And so some of the things that we're going to go over is the notice that we did share on our newspaper, the monitor. We will be talking about the certified tax values, the tax rate history, and the uses of these tax revenues. So if you had looked at the monitor on Wednesday, September 3rd, you would have noticed our notice of this public meeting in the newspaper. We have to do it within 30 days or at the least 10 days before this meeting. So the first thing that we always talk about is the tax rate that we are proposing. So what we will have is our maintenance tax, .7291 per $100. The debt service or the monies that we collect to pay our bonds, .2142. So if you looked at last year, you'll notice that it is half a penny less, .48 of a penny less from one year to the next. So we are proposing a tax decrease. Other things that also pop up on our notice is that we do compare last year's budget to this year's budget. And because of House Bill 2, we have new funding coming in and so we do have a overall total expenditure increase of 5.55%. If we looked at last year's property values versus this year's, we do have a comparison about all the property values that are appraised within the boundaries of Wesaco ISD. The number of new property dollars that are invested in our area, what are the taxable values, and also the new property values. So again, $3.5 billion of tax values is here within Wesaco ISD. Another thing that we always share is what are the bonds of the school district? How much do we owe? But if you remember back in November '23, we went for a brand-new bond, $160 million. So that's why the balance is just a little bit bigger than that, $182 million. We do also talk about the tax rates of prior year and compared to this year. And so again, last year was $94.81 per $81.81. When we compare it to this time around, $94.33. So again, that 48, half a penny difference. But at the end of the day, what is that tax impact for a normal property here in Wesaco ISD? So last year, a regular property average for a homeowner here was $172,000. That was last year. With this year, again, every year the tax appraisal district does go off and either raise it or most times raise property values. So the average residence here now is $189,000. But you have noticed throughout this past state legislator session, there is a ballot item that will decrease the property taxes, which is going to be through a homestead exemption increase. So last year was $100,000, now it's $140,000. So for that same average residence, they are going to anticipate a tax decrease of $237. And that's the average homeowner would receive. If your property values are higher, well, you will be paying more taxes. But if your property home is less, well, then you also will enjoy that tax benefit. And so as we, one of the last things that we do share for the public is what is our fund balances? So in other words, a fund balance is our tax, the whole entire savings of the school district. We do bring it up into two parts, one being our maintenance and operation, or another way to think of it is our local budget, but also our interest and sinking, which is similar to our debt service, the one to pay the bills for the bond. And so we do have about $65 million anticipated for our local and $2 million for our debt service. And so when we post this into the newspaper, we are sharing with the public what is our tax rate. But I do want to take a step back and just talk about our values. And again, all this great information will be on our website. If you were to look at our transparency, you would actually see last year's. But for our highlighted purple section, $3.5 billion of tax values is what is the certified value for this current tax year. And it was, and I say only, $36 million more. But if you look at prior years...
Good evening. I'm Isidoro Nieto, President of Wesco ISD Board of Trustees. This public hearing is being conducted in compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least three business days prior to the date of the meeting. A record of this meeting is being made and a recording, my fault, of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time is now 5:32 PM and I will call this meeting to order. I will now begin the roll call, even though we don't have to have a quorum for a public hearing. Coach Armado Cuellar.
Present.
Mr. Eddie Serna.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Nieto. Some of the other board members will be arriving in a few minutes except for maybe one that was, had a small accident. But we're ready to get started. Dr. Rivera.
Yes, Mr. David.
Yes, sir. So there is no public comment who signed up, just FYI, and so I'm going to go right through our presentation. So this is a public hearing for the proposed 25-26 tax rate. And so some of the things that we're going to go over is the notice that we did share on our newspaper, the monitor. We will be talking about the certified tax values, the tax rate history, and the uses of these tax revenues. So if you had looked at the monitor on Wednesday, September 3rd, you would have noticed our notice of this public meeting in the newspaper. We have to do it within 30 days or at the least 10 days before this meeting. So the first thing that we always talk about is the tax rate that we are proposing. So what we will have is our maintenance tax, .7291 per $100. The debt service or the monies that we collect to pay our bonds, .2142. So if you looked at last year, you'll notice that it is half a penny less, .48 of a penny less from one year to the next. So we are proposing a tax decrease. Other things that also pop up on our notice is that we do compare last year's budget to this year's budget. And because of House Bill 2, we have new funding coming in and so we do have a overall total expenditure increase of 5.55%. If we looked at last year's property values versus this year's, we do have a comparison about the, all the property values that are appraised within the boundaries of Wesco ISD, the number of new property dollars that are invested in our area, what are the taxable values, and also the new property values. So again, $3.5 billion of tax values is here within Wesco ISD. Another thing that we always share is what are the bonds of the school district? How much do we owe? But if you remember back in November '23, we went for a brand-new bond, $160 million. So that's why the balance is just a little bit bigger than that, $182 million. We do also talk about the tax rates of prior year and compared to this year. And so again, last year was 94 pennies and 81. When we compare it to this time around, 94.33. So again, that 48, half a penny difference. But at the end of the day, what is that tax impact for a normal property here in Wesco ISD? So last year, a regular property average for a homeowner here was $172,000. That was last year. With this year, again, every year the tax appraisal district does go off and either raise it or most times raise property values. So the average residence here now is $189,000. But you will have noticed throughout this past state legislator session, there is a ballot item that will decrease the property taxes, which is going to be through a homestead exemption increase. So last year was $100,000, now it's $140,000. So for that same average residence, they are going to anticipate a tax decrease of $237. And that's the average homeowner would receive. If your property values are higher, well, you will be paying more taxes. But if your property home is less, well, then you also will enjoy that tax benefit. And so as we, one of the last things that we do share for the public is what is our fund balances? So in other words, a fund balance is our tax, the whole entire savings of the school district. We do bring it up into two parts, one being our maintenance and operation, or another way to think of it is our local budget, but also our interest and sinking, which is similar to our debt service, the one to pay the bills for the bond. And so we do have about $65 million anticipated for our local and $2 million for our debt service. And so when we post this into the newspaper, we are sharing with the public what is our tax rate. But I do want to take a step back and just talk about our values. And again, all this great information will be on our website. If you were to look at our transparency, you would actually see last year's. But for our highlighted purple section, $3.5 billion of tax values is what is the certified value for this current tax year. And it was, and I say only, $36 million more. But if you look at prior years, it was higher. Why did it go down? It all is related to that homestead exemption increase. And so we are again seeing a 1%. It would have been way more if that homestead didn't go through, but that's okay. The property taxes is, in a sense, going to be lesser than last year. Now the tax rate, again, this is a 10-year history, just to kind of give everyone an idea. And if you can't read those numbers, that's why I put it onto the side, but if you can't read any of it, it will be on our website. So again, if we look at our maintenance and operating tax rate, there is no change. Last year and this year, .7291, that's the one that helps the district pays its bills. But the difference is really in our debt service, the monies that are collected for the bond. And if you see, last year was .2190. And then this year, what we are proposing is a .2142. So again, .48 is the difference. If you do some math, it's about a half a percent decrease from one year to the next. So what do we typically use these funds for? And so when I talk about maintenance and operating, I'm thinking general fund. And so those tax dollars is to help the district do its day-to-day, normal operating expenses. So for us, it's to pay the salaries, to pay utilities, things of that nature. If you were to kind of put it in your own personal home, what does a citizen would pay? Well, think of it as your groceries, your utilities, your minor repairs at the house. Now, if I switch over to my debt service, which is the interest and sinking for the school district, is to either do a bond to build brand-new or to do major renovations. And that's how we do it. We repair our HVAC units, our roofing and things of the such. For the average citizen, what does that sound like? It's kind of like your mortgage, your car payment, things of that nature. And so as we kind of close up this budget process, we are already thinking about next year. And so for the '26-'27, the first budget workshop, we are tentatively believing that's going to happen February 16th of next year. So that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Let me see if anybody has any questions before you sit down. Coach Cuellar?
Thank you, Dave, for the information and for the diligence and making sure that everything is good and sound and very transparent. So thank you.
Coach Serna?
No, thank you, Dave.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a couple of questions first. Good presentation. Question number one, you said something about fund balance, $65 million, correct?
That is correct.
And so that's $65 million for the public. What is that fund for?
Yes, so this fund balance, it is in my head, two buckets. One bucket is what we call unassigned, which that's just a technical way of saying monies that are not restricted, that are not assigned to a specific use. And that is what we set aside at the minimum, 90 days. We here at Wesco ISD actually has more. And so those are our savings for projects, construction, for unforeseen items that just, that we're ready for any of those type of items.
So the state mandates that we have to have 90 days, or every district has to have 90 days of fund balance available for the district?
So luckily, they keep it at the word recommended.
Correct.
And so it is not set in law, but to make sure that we are physically sound, we strive for their recommendation of 90 days, which is the three months.
Okay, thank you. Question number two, so that way our public can know, our tax rate was, you said, .9433, correct?
9433.
Okay, compared to all the school districts in the valley, besides us, who's lower than us? I believe there's only one school district that's lower in the tax rate.
Good question. I know the superintendent is going to be talking about that soon.
Okay.
It's Edinburg.
Edinburg.
So that way the public can know that, you know what, there's, the tax rate here is low. And we do, Dr. Rivera has done a tremendous job. And we do a lot for the district, a lot for the students, a lot for the staff, yet the tax rate is still low.
It's one of the lowest.
Yes, compared to other school districts. Edinburg is the lowest right now. But compared to McAllen, Harlingen, and so forth, Wesco is the second lowest. So they're just an FYI for the community, so you can know. Okay?
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir. And I believe that was my last question.
And later in the agenda, you'll know for the tax rate.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Dr. Jaime, I know you were here late, but do you have any questions?
No, I don't, but thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Dr. Rodriguez came in at 5:41, even though we don't need a quorum for the public hearing. But he is here. Okay, number four, public comments on proposed 25-26 tax rate. Anybody from the public that would like to ask a question or present, if you would want to, on what Mr. Rivera presented? Nobody? All right, thank you. Adjournment?
So moved.
All right, so it's 5:45 and we adjourn. Are we ready to begin the regular board meeting? Okay, so. Dr. Jaime, just in case.
I got it here.
Oh, you got one? Okay. We'll continue. Good evening. I'm Isidoro Nieto, President of Wesco ISD Board of Trustees. This regular board meeting is being conducted in compliance with the Texas Opens Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least three business days prior to the date of the meeting. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time is now 5:46 and I will call this meeting to order. I will now begin the roll call. Dr. Jaime Rodriguez?
Present.
Coach Armado Cuellar?
Present.
Mr. Ben Castillo?
Present.
Mr. Eddie Serna?
Present.
And we have a quorum available, so we'll continue with the meeting. Invocation, Dr. Rivera. Mr. Rivera? Would you be so kind to bow your heads? Gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, would you just please remove it in reverence to the Lord? Let us all pray. Heavenly Father, our Lord Jesus Christ, how great and mighty you are. We honor and magnify your holy name. God, in all situations, at all times, you are good. Nothing compares to you and there is no one like you. We are humbled that we get to know who you are. We thank you for the blessing of gathering once again as a corporate body and the privilege to serve this most beautiful and thriving community of Weslaco. Father, as is always our petition, we ask you to continue to bless and grant greater wisdom to our superintendent, Dr. Richard Rivera, and our board. May your will be done in our board meetings. Help us to always maintain integrity in what you have left in our care. As we come to the end of our first six weeks, we thank you for the victories in every classroom, in every school. We thank you also for the moments of difficulty as it reminds us always to stay near to you. For without you, we are nothing. Teach us to love others as you have loved us, a love that is freely given, expecting nothing in return. There is gratitude in our hearts for all that you have done, are doing, and will do in the days to come. Greater days are coming. We ask you all this in your precious, glorious, and mighty name of Jesus, and everyone says, amen. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Zdravinho. Pledge of Allegiance and Texas pledge, Dr. Rivera.
Good evening. At this time, we'd ask everyone to please stand, place their right hand over their heart, and face the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, we'd ask everyone to remain standing, right hand over their heart, and face the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Buttermark. Awards and recognitions and proclamations, Dr. Rivera.
Mr. Carlos Rivera?
Yes, sir, Mr. Nieto, Dr. Rivera, members of the board. We have lots of recognitions and awards tonight, so we're going to get started. We have a room full of parents and so we'd like to recognize, how about a big hand, as we welcome some students who are coming to the front of the room. Well, here tonight is an incredible group from Kleckler Helled Elementary. How about we give them another round of applause? Tonight, we congratulate Kleckler Helled Elementary Choir, which recently returned from the American Classic Choir Competition in San Antonio. We are proud to announce that our elementary students won the Division One trophy for the fourth year in a row. Breaking news, we have a correction. It was actually the fifth year in a row. And over this two-day event, they were also named Best in Festival for their outstanding performance. Let's give them a round of applause. We also want to congratulate their choir director, Ms. Gloria Champion. Let's give her a round of applause. And proud parents of your here, can you please stand and be recognized? Parents? All right. Okay, kids, if you could look forward right there, because we're going to take a picture. Parents, you want to take some photos real quick? All right, thank you very much. Congratulations. You may exit this way. Okay, so up next, we can have Coach Rodriguez come to the front. Coach Mario Rodriguez, how about we give him a round of applause? Just come up there and turn around, Coach. We want to congratulate Weslaco High School Head Softball Coach Mario Rodriguez for a recent achievement. This summer, he was inducted into the 2025 Real Grand Valley Sports Hall of Fame. Coach Rodriguez accomplished what no other Real Grand Valley softball coach has done. In 2024, he became the first coach in RGV's sports history to lead his softball team to a state championship. During his 18 years as head coach at Weslaco High, he has been to the state tournament twice and his team won in dramatic fashion with a walk-off grand slam, being down nine to three in the bottom of the seventh inning. Coach Rodriguez is only the third softball coach to be inducted into the Real Grand Valley Sports Hall of Fame. How about a round of applause? We also want to recognize family members who are here tonight. Can they please stand and be recognized? All right, thank you. All right, congratulations again, Coach Rodriguez. All right, we have a Purple Star campus designation. We want to recognize one of our campuses. Tonight, we want to recognize one of our elementary schools. The Texas Education Agency recently announced that Dr. R.E. Margaux Elementary School received the Purple Star Campus Designation for the 2025-2026 school year. Margaux is one of our, is one of four schools in the region to receive this distinction this year. We commend the counseling staff at Margaux Elementary for their work to establish a campus-based military liaison, a website, and a transition program to assist and support our military-connected students and their families. The Purple Star Campus Program was established in 2019 to recognize Texas schools that meet the unique needs of military-connected students and their families. How about a round of applause for Margaux Elementary and their principal, Arcadia Lopez? Quick photo, Ms. Lopez? Thank you. Up next, we would like to recognize the school district, Weslaco ISD. The Texas Education Agency recently presented Weslaco ISD with a distinction designation for the 2024-2025 school year. Our district was awarded the Post-Secondary Readiness Distinction. After meeting several indicators in this category, Weslaco ISD easily surpassed the 55 percentage target by scoring 62%. Congratulations, Weslaco ISD. Tonight, we want to recognize several of our schools for their tremendous success with the State of Texas Assessment of Academic Readiness Exams. Our academic performance continues to increase. And tonight, we want to recognize all of our A-rated and B-rated campuses from the previous three years. We'll begin with the 2022-2023 We'll begin with the 2022-2023 school year and our B-rated campuses. So principals, as I announce your school, can you please step up to the front of the room? We'll start off with Airport Elementary. Up next, Kleckler Held Elementary. Up next, North Bridge Elementary. Also, let's recognize Mario Ibada Elementary. B Garza Middle School. Up next, Westlaco East High School. Up next, we have our A-rated campuses for the 2022-23 school year. Up next, Gonzalez Elementary. And South Palm Gardens. Up next are B-rated campuses for the 2023-2024 school year. Sam Houston Elementary. B Garza Middle School. Westlaco East High School. And Westlaco High School. A-rated campuses for 2023-2024, Memorial Elementary. Central Middle School. And South Palm Gardens. Now, our, the 2024-2025 school year, B-rated campuses, Kleckler Held Elementary. Ibada Elementary. Dr. Armando Cuellar Middle School. B Garza Middle School. Westlaco East High School. And now, our A-rated campuses, a few more. The A-rated campuses for 2024-2025, Memorial Elementary. Gonzalez Elementary. Sam Houston Elementary. Central Middle School. South Palm Gardens. Westlaco High School. All right, so let's give our schools a round of applause for the past three years, TA-recognized campuses, A and B.
Hold on. Dr. Rivera, can I recommend, can I request something? I know that Mrs. Morales was the principal over at Westlaco High School. She is here. I would like her to take a picture, because she was the principal there at Westlaco High.
Congratulations.
Carlos, hold on.
Yes, sir.
One minute. Principals, this is for you all. We'll see what each board member has to say to you or about you. Dr. Jaime?
Great job, you know. It's nice to see all those awards going up there, and I know there's a lot of hard work and long hours that go into, you know, your work, and thank you, thank you for all that you do. It doesn't go unnoticed, you know, and I know, speaking on behalf of the rest of the board, you know, we're here to support you. That's really our number one, so keep up the great work and thank you, thank you for all you do.
Coach Cuellar, thank you, Dr. Jaime.
I agree with what Dr. Rodriguez says, and I've said it all along, you know. We know what you go through, and it's not an easy thing, but you saved the course, you're getting there, we're improving, and I've always said where you're at is important, where you're going to be is more important, and that's, and that's what we're striving for, to just keep getting better. And thank you for everything that you've done, and we, we are here to support you along the way, and wish you the very best for this school year, so thanks a lot.
Thank you, Coach Cuellar. Mr. Castillo?
Yes, sir, I echo the sentiments of my fellow trustees. Congratulations to all principals. It's nice to see the, the years that we had, starting from 2023, and the increases in schools in that group, and I know as we continue to work hard, as you guys continue to work hard, that number will only get bigger. So thank you, guys, for all your hard work. Appreciate y'all very much, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Coach Salda?
Very well said by all, all the fellow board members. I know that, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort, and the time and effort you guys put in there, like Ben was saying, doesn't go unnoticed, or I think it was Doc, doesn't go unnoticed. Guys, we're here for you, and we're here to support you. Know that, I know that you guys have, the boys and girls are number one in your list, and just keep up the good work, and I love seeing all the presentations and the ratings, A and B. We always strive for that A. So again, I congratulate all of you, and from, from all of us, I really know that y'all put in a lot of effort and hard work into this, so thank you for the job that y'all do.
Thank you, Coach Salda. And myself, of course, you know, you always have to have, set up, set high expectations for yourself. Difficult for those As to maintain As, difficult but not impossible. The Bs, you can work and, and, and expect an A, because I know I saw one of the middle schools last year improved 11 points, so it's, it's doable. Yes, Cuellar Middle School, okay? So, and then, of course, if we had any Cs, just a reminder that you, as a principal, can share your ideas with the other principals in order for us, all of us, to continue to improve, and I, and I believe we will, okay? Thank you very much for all that you do. Dr. Rivera?
Thank you, board. It's, it's a team effort, starts with the board, and all the work, the staff, the teachers, I commend you, and, and I just appreciate all your work. Thank you again, very much.
Thank you. And of course, central office staff that works with the principals, that, those are very important, too. So if you ever need any assistance, any help, any guidance, we have individuals here with, they have been principals before. Mr. Aguilar, Mr. Buttermeyer, Mrs. Palacio, I was going to say Palacios, Ms. Solano, I was thinking Palacios. So, reach out and continue to do well. Thank you. All right, let's, proclamations.
We'll do our proclamation for the month of October. Westlaco Independent School District has a longstanding tradition of excellence and strives to bring together resources to provide our students and staff with the best opportunities for success. To that end, Westlaco ISD acknowledges and celebrates initiatives, departments, and organizations that join in our efforts to develop, expand, and enrich our learning environment for students, parents, and employees. Therefore, Isidoro Nieto, President of the Westlaco Independent School District Board of Trustees, does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Dyslexia Month. We also proclaim in October 2025, School Custodian Appreciation Day, October 2nd, Texas Education Human Resource Day, October 8th, and Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st. And we also want to recognize the Gear Up Team for National Gear Up Week, which is September 22nd through the 26th. In Westlaco ISD, and urge all citizens to recognize with appreciation our district's commitment to education in helping our children achieve their highest potential. Signed, Isidoro Nieto, President of the Westlaco ISD Board of Trustees. And I know the Gear Up Team is here, saw them here, they're wearing their orange, if y'all want to stand up and be recognized. And that is our proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. We will continue. Number six, public comments.
There are two.
Okay.
Yeah, there are two.
We have Mr. David Fuentes, Hidal County Commissioner, to do a short presentation. Mr. Fuentes, welcome. Before we begin, Dr. Jaime will read you a, a list there for you to follow.
Okay, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Dave, could you go ahead and state your name and address, please?
David Fuentes, 3619 South Border, Westlaco, Texas, 78596.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, the Board of Trustees may not deliberate on any comment made by a member of the public on a subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of this meeting. As per the Texas Attorney General, the scope of board discussion for a subject not part of the meeting agenda is limited to only proposal by a board member to place the subject on a future board agenda. Specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries, but the board shall not deliberate and decide, or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated for that purpose. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board unless recognized by the presiding officer. No public comment presentation shall exceed three minutes. Any disruptive behavior by any speaker may result in the speaker's removal from participation in the meeting. Please be mindful of using names or personally identifiable information, as there is no immunity from defamatory comments while participating in public comments. And we'll start the clock whenever you start.
All right, well, thank you very much for having me. Congratulations on all the academic success that y'all just celebrated to all the principals and staff. Congratulations to everybody. I'm here with a couple of representatives from my office and our project manager, B to Z, David Rivera, representing them, and then I have Rick Salinas out here in the audience, and Mario Cano. Precinct One is in the process of building a 30,000-square-foot wellness center. It's located just south of North Bridge Elementary, and it's going to have all kinds of activities and places for, for kids and adults, senior citizens, everybody, all of our community residents, to be able to play and exercise and get, get more fit, be more physically active. We're going to have all kinds of programs in there. It's going to have two full-size gyms, maple floors, 10-foot-tall, 17-foot-wide digital boards in each independent gymnasium. It's going to have a weight room, it's going to have a studio room, it's going to have a classroom, it's going to have batting cages, it's going to have a golf simulator, full concession with healthy options and your traditional snack bar-type foods. So it's going to be a destination place. We're very confident in that. We're excited that, we, we believe it should be complete and able to be used probably sometime in February or March, at the latest, or at least weather permitting, and we're very excited about what this means to the Mid Valley and, and more specifically even to Westlaco, since it's being built here. One of the things that we've encountered as we've gone through this construction process is that we need to tap into a, to a water line in order to be able to put in a fire suppression system. So my presentation today is just out of courtesy to give you a heads-up on a request that we're going to ask of, or ask of the Westlaco ISD. We met with some of your staff on Friday to explain the situation to them and what we're asking for. If you look at the diagram, you'll see the proposed wellness center there, and there's a purple line that runs from a fire hydrant up near the curb, and it cir, and it revolves or goes around the proposed wellness center. And then you see that it kind of turns towards the north and ends up going into North Bridge Elementary. What that is, what we are proposing and asking for the Westlaco Independent School District to consider is allowing us to tap into your fire hydrant water line. We've come to find that because it's on private property, it is, it's on the school district's property, this water line only feeds the fire hydrants that are around North Bridge Elementary. What we're asking for is the ability to tap into that water line to complete the loop that would go around our building. The other tap would be at the fire hydrant in the, at the front of the building or up near the curb, so we're asking for permission to be able to tap into this water line. We've left, left a small designated spot in the, in the dotted area that is going to have a valve that can be shut off in case of some sort of an emergency, a water break, water line break of some kind that may disrupt water service to those fire hydrants, so that valve can be placed, you know, anywhere in that proposed area, and we'll leave it up to the school district if they are agreeable to this, to determine where they would like for it to be placed. It could be on your property, our property. At the end of the day, it's, it's there for, for safety purposes and redundancies. So this is just going to be a courtesy information. You'll also see the second page there is a letter from the Fire Marshal that, that tells you that it's only, that water line that you have on the district property is only feeding the fire hydrants and not anything inside of the school, so there was, there is no disruption to any sort of water that goes directly into the school grounds, or at least inside the building, that would affect children. So we'll be asking more formally for that permission to be able to tap into that water line.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes, for the information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments, number two, Israel Gonzalez, I believe. Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Jaime will read a script for you. He'll ask you to state your name and your address, and then he'll give you the rest of the information.
I, I heard it, if you want to skip it, or if you have to read it.
I'd read it.
Read it, okay. Go ahead, state your name and your address, please.
Israel Gonzalez, 1609 Sunset Lane, Palmhurst, Texas, 78573.
Mr. Gonzalez, pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, the Board of Trustees may not deliberate on any comment made by a member of the public on the, on a subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of this meeting. As per the Texas Attorney General, the scope of board discussion for a subject not part of the meeting agenda is limited to only proposal by a board member to place the subject on a future board agenda. Specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries, but the board- to inquiries, but the Board shall not deliberate or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated for that purpose. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the Board unless recognized by the presiding officer. No public comment presentation shall exceed three minutes. Any disruptive behavior by any speaker may result in the speaker's removal from participation in the meeting. Please be mindful of using names or personally identifiable information as there's no immunity from defamatory comments while participating in public comments. And I'll go ahead and start the clock once you start. I'm here to talk about funding. The July 28 workshop, you guys were talking about how we're $31 million in the hole, $17 million based off of construction. So I wanted to talk about that and provide, I guess, a solution or an idea towards a solution. One of the things that I noticed is that there was a required raise for teachers. So that one, there was no way around, that was required. However, I couldn't help but notice that there was a 4% raise for administration. That was not necessary. That was just chosen. You guys decided to do that. I have to question who it was that offered that raise or proposed that raise. Was it administration? Now, the reason I ask this is because there are seven administrators at my campus where I'm currently at. This is because we have less students than we used to have a few years ago, and yet there's three more administrators that there were. Basically, there's too many chiefs and not enough Indians. We've seen this information acknowledged by the Department of Education, that the rate of growth of administrators far exceeds the pace of that of teachers and students. We don't actually need more administrators, we need more teachers. That would help a lot of problems, it would go a long ways. So one of the things that I also had been asking was about this program that was being used at my campus. I wanted to know the price of that, and I searched low, I searched high, but hard as I may try, that information never came my way despite being told by my administrator that that information would be provided to me. It has not yet been provided to me. This leads me to believe that that number is probably going to raise some questions. And this program is supposed to be to help kids belong, which I find interesting because if we want to help kids belong, if we just had more teachers to listen to these students, that would go a lot further. If we just gave these kids at Mary Hoag Middle School a track and field, that would go a lot further. And I do want to thank you, Mr. Serna, because you're the one that asked if that construction had began. And I do want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, sir, because we're often relegated to the end or we're often forgotten about. So it meant a lot to me that you stood up there for us and you asked. But I do believe that having a track and field, you know, all the other schools that already had one had theirs renovated first, is my understanding, and here we are, still waiting for ours. We don't even have ours. Giving them a track and field, prioritizing them, giving them more teachers to work with them, to listen to them, instead of giving us more administrators, that would go a long way, guys. That's just something that, you know, if we really want to capture the hearts of our students, that's what we need to do. We need to listen to them when they feel that they have something to say. We need to be genuine with them. And, you know, that's really all I had to say about this matter. We just really don't need any more administrators, we just need more teachers. I want to thank you guys for giving me the time to speak to y'all, and thank you for your attention. You guys have a great night. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. We'll continue with the meeting. Superintendent's report. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, I have 15 slides. Let me start with the enrollment on page two. You can see the enrollment last year at the same time was 16,238. This September, it's 16,102, so we're at a minus, at a minus 136. On the following page, you see the enrollment by the elementary, the middle school later, and then the secondary. So on page three, you see Gonzalez compared to last year is at a minus 18, Ibarra a plus 58, Silva a minus 59, Sam Houston a minus 15, An Airport a minus 41, North Bridge a minus 23, Rico a minus 5, Kleckler Hales a minus 1, Memorial a minus 46, and Margot a plus 49. So total in elementary compared to last year, we're at 101 less. So that's about five, we're budgeted for five more than we have the numbers for. But again, we're not, no one's gonna lose their jobs just to let the Board know that an elementary at a minus 101 would be minus five teachers. In the middle schools, Mary Hoag is a minus 61, A Cuellar minus 6, Central a minus 14, Big Garza a plus 18, so middle schools a minus 63. You can see again that based on these numbers, we're overstaffed, but again, no one's gonna lose their job because we've got very good class counts on all of these, all of these secondary schools, or middle schools. On page five, you have the high schools. College and Career a minus 1, The Boot Camp a plus 5, JJAP a plus 1, South Palm Gardens a plus 13, Westlaco East a minus 4, Westlaco High School a plus 50. So total in the secondary schools, the high schools, we're at a minus 36 compared to last year. On page six, you see the actual enrollment with the ADA. In 2024, the budget was set at $14,000, we hit $14,522, so we received an additional about $3 million more. But last year, the budget was set at $14,500, so the actual ADA was $14,434. And for this year, we're gonna budget $14,500 again. The financial impact for us not meeting the $14,500 for 2025 with 66 less students, a reduction from state revenues of about $561,000. And we have goals for the campuses. 94 are the high schools, 95 middle schools, 96 the elementaries. So by not reaching that amount, we left on the table about $1.6 million. Now, there were reasons, we understand, there's COVID, different reasons, the immigration scare, so, but a goal now is to make sure that we meet the ADA plus work on increasing the enrollment. On page seven, our goal here is student and staff safety, and we have these campus vestibules at all our schools. A vestibule is kind of an enclosed entrance between the exterior door and the interior door of the building for safety reasons. Parents and visitors are required to check in, and the vestibules went on campus grounds. And on B, elementary campuses, vestibules are complete or in progress, secondary vestibules are complete or in progress, and we paid these from a federal grant and the bond proposition, the bond election. On page eight, this is playground equipment to the 10 elementary schools. And on A, we are constructing a pre-K 3-4 special needs playground additions to all elementary schools to allow for appropriate age usage and equity. Elementary campus playgrounds are complete or in progress, and then the funding for this is fund balance. On page nine, again, our goal here is safety a top priority. You can see that we've installed this window shatter resistance film at all campuses, they're complete or in progress. We have the magnetic access controls on all campuses, they have been completed or in progress. We've done the district-wide fencing with a chain link in the campuses, again, for safety standards. We have safety resource officers from the city, nine in the secondary campuses, in elementary campuses, we had one armed guard last year, now we have two. So again, the goal is student and staff safety. On page 10, I'm happy to report, I want to commend Mrs. Gomez and her staff, we were recipient of $308,000. It was a competitive grant to train students as nurse assistants in partnership with STC. The grant money was used to purchase new state-of-the-art hospital beds and then the mannequins. We have almost 1,200 students that have direct exposure to health science. The overall health science IBC certifications for last year was 72 students leaving Westlaco ISD to become certified. On page 11, as mentioned earlier, this is the Region 1 tax rate, and you can see that our tax rate is the lowest one in Region 1. Edinburgh, Edinburgh is the lowest one, and then after that, you can see Sherri Land, McAllen, PHJA, La Jolla, Donna, Mission, Mercedes, Ed Couch, and Hidalgo. And actually, when you approve the agenda tonight, there's actually a reduction of 9433 from last year. So as was mentioned earlier, the MNO is for operations, that stayed the same. The INS is the interest of principal and bonds. This one reduced slightly. And on C, even though we passed a big bond election two years ago, and we expected a slight tax increase, we actually did not. So you can see again that our citizens in Westlaco here, the homeowners, they pay less taxes than just about everyone in Hidalgo with the exception of Edinburgh. On page 12, I want to go over the way we get things that we need. We either get loans or we call bond elections. So you can see that there's four notes from previous years. The disadvantage here is that you have to pay this from the MNO, from the 72.9, from the tax rate. And disadvantage here is that there's no state aid like with bond elections. So you can see the four, the first one is a public property note that was to pay for HVAC equipment, controls, energy conservation, and projects district-wide. The amount was $12.712 million, and the maturity date is not until 2029. So future superintendents, future boards will continue paying this until 2029. And again, we pay this every year from the MNO. The next loan was in 2017. This was for HVAC, vehicles, fencing, roofing, $15 million, and you can see that it will mature in 2037. Number three, the maintenance loan in 2018 was to repair damaged buses, almost $5 million, and this matures in 2033. Then the last one was a scoreboard in 2019, $1.3 million, and this matures in 2029. Again, these are loans, there's no state aid. I don't want to take credit for these. I was not superintendent when these loans were made, but again, future superintendents, future boards will have to continue paying these, taken from the MNO. On page 13, these are bond elections. These are the ones where the state assists us from 40 to 70%, and we can refinance once the loans are at a certain stage. But you can see with bond elections, we were able to build Westlaco ISD to where it is now. And in 96, a bond election was passed for Westlaco East, that one is paid in full. In 96, in 2002, Big Garza was built from an intermediate, not to a middle school, that one's paid in full. I was superintendent for all of these. In 1999, there was a bond election to build Gonzalez and Silva and CTE, $20 million, and we're almost done with this one in 2026 at a 2% rate. The next one, the bond election in '26, this was to construct Cuellar, Cuellar and Ibarra, $25 million. The interest rate is a little high, so we're gonna look to see if that can be, when it's time, to see if we can go ahead and refinance again for that interest. And then the last one, the big one, was in 2024 and for $160 million, and you can see that there were district-wide improvements in kitchen, in HVAC, in tracks, in roofing, and YAG barn, fire alarms, restrooms. So many of the items that are here were this big bond election. So again, the only way to continue building in Westlaco is in the future, whatever needs are there, are to go ahead and call bond elections, because the MNO by itself cannot fund any of these. There's not enough money to do any of these except with bond elections. On the middle school tracks, I want to say that Cuellar, Central Cuellar and Big Garza are complete. Mary Hoag is pending. As the Board knows, there were some problems with the soil, so this one should be complete in 2026. We're not ignoring Mary Hoag, it's just that it was something that happened with the soil that we could not complete it, but it is gonna be done. The funding source was the bond proposition, Proposition C. And on page 16, the Panther Wildcat Field, the turf is complete, and it's been used already, and this was paid from fund balance. And that's my report. If you have any questions on any of these slides, I'm here and staff is here to answer any of this.
I'll begin on the right side with Coach Serna first. Any questions, Coach Serna?
Well, no, I just want to comment that a lot of things are being done, and, you know, sometimes it does take time, and I know sometimes we do encounter problems. But the main thing is to stay on it, stay on it until it gets completed. So just keep up the good work with you guys that are out there in the front lines, just keep pushing it. That's about it.
Mr. Castillo?
Just want to make an observation. $20 million for Westlaco East in 1996?
Yes.
Now, you can't build a high school for less than $100 million.
But we doubled since then. We added gyms and wings and just different things.
Oh, okay. Now, good job, Dr. Rivera. Thank you for all you do. Thank you to your staff and all the principals and teachers, and appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Coach Quer?
Same, Senator McSino, Dr. Rivera. You were given the ball, you've been running with that ball, and you're doing a heck of a job, so keep up the good work with you and your staff and everybody that's part of your team, so thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Dr. Jaime?
Same, Dr. Rivera. Thank you for the report. A lot of information here, you know, from enrollment to safety and security, and also the transparency with, you know, our work that's being done with loans and bond elections. But, you know, great report thanks to you and the entire team.
Thank you.
And again, Dr. Rivera, good job. Couple of questions. I know that public comments that mentioned that the Mary Hoag track, but Coach Serna mentioned that, of course, it was delayed for different things, that we, public knows that we did propose it, and of course, in the near future, they'll finish the track for Mary Hoag Middle School. Couple of questions. Where are we on the tennis courts upgrades at Westlaco High?
Okay.
Mr. Mary Hoag?
It just happened that I happened to be there on Saturday, and I saw the crack, so I said, you know what? I'm gonna bring it up today to see what is it that we can do.
As part of the bond election.
Yes, sir. It's part of the bond election.
Yeah, so we do have, the engineer already came up with a design, and we're working through it, and we're studying different options that we have that we're looking at. But once we come to that final decision, it should be any time that we're gonna bring it to you. We do need to go out for, I'm sorry, we do need to rank the bids that came in because we do have bids. But again, we do need to do an assessment on it and then bring you the rankings for approval.
And FYI, just because, you know, administrators and of course, parents ask, you know, because it was in the bond, and so it was proposed, so now we gotta move forward so we can finish that project. The second one is demolition of the central gym. Where are we with that?
That one, so we've got two parts on that gymnasium. We have asbestos, that has to take place first, and there's a 10-day notification that has to be made to the state. And so I believe we've already completed that, and right now, we're just finalizing background checks so that the asbestos can get started, the asbestos abatement. And then immediately following that, the demolition will begin.
And the third one, I just happened to see it on Saturday when I was there at the tennis courts, the demolition of the swimming pool, the old swimming pool, or whatever we're gonna do with it.
Yes.
Yeah. So we're working with the engineer, we're working on that. So that's still not a final design, and we're working with their proposal and the design of it, the engineering part.
That was not part of the bond, correct?
Right.
Right? No, no.
Not part of the bond, no. Not part of the bond, no.
Okay.
What are we looking at though? Is it by the end of the year, you're going to start or do you, do you have an idea?
At this point, I couldn't say, Coach, and only because of the design, depending on, on what we want to come back with there, we're for sure covering it up and, and, and doing the demolition of everything that needs to be taken out, removed and fill, and the infill. And then whatever prep work needs to be done for whatever, if we're going to come back with the storage and, and that be the final decision, then all of that has to be incorporated into the design. So I really don't have that timeline right now.
Because baseball season's in the spring and then tennis goes.
Year round.
So it's just one of those things where, I don't know what, what the scope of the, the job is, but something to keep in mind.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I had another thing.
Go ahead.
On safety and security, where are we with the videos, the, the cameras? Are we pretty, pretty much operational with all the video cameras and the technology? Yes. 502 cameras. This why? But they're pretty much all operational in them?
They're still waiting to transfer the U servers we bought for them. So they're waiting to do that. They're in the process.
So, I mean, is it 90%, 80%?
It's like 90% done. As far as the cameras, cameras are open.
Good question. Coach Serna. And Mr. Castillo, you had a question?
Just one clarifying question. I know, you know, you spoke about funding and there's a comment made on public comment that we're $31 million in the hole. That's not the case, is it?
No. You can see on the financial report that we're not in the red. The only, the only section that there's a slight, and that's, that's the ADA, that we didn't reach the, the number that we had. So that's about, about $600,000 that we're not going to get from the state. So that's, that's about it. Everything else you'll see on the financial report, you'll see when the auditors come in, that, that is incorrect. We do have a balanced budget with the exception of that one that I mentioned because the ADA was lower than what we expected.
All right. Thank you, doctor, for that clarification.
Yes.
Is that it? Any other, any other clarifying questions, comments?
All right. Let's continue. Number eight, long-term governance. Dr. Rivera?
Yes. Mr. Solano, you want to go over the, the information?
Good evening, Mr. Nieto, fellow trustees and Dr. Rivera and community. So tonight we will be presenting on two areas. The first GPM or Goal Five, GPM 5.3, we are going to be presenting on associate's degrees. Currently at 24, for the 24, 25 school year, West Loco High had 51 students earn their associate's degree. West Loco East, 41. Our projections for this school year are West Loco High will have 66 students earn their associate's degree and West Loco East will have 59. So with this growth in associate's degree, we will meet our target, our annual target of a 9% for the year 2026. So we are on track to meeting our annual target for students enrolled in our early college high school program. Okay. Now on constraint two, for our CPM 2.1, which is in reference to class counts. CPM 2.1 reads elementary class counts for low performing campuses, C or less rating in domain one student achievement will have less than 20% of their classes submitted for waivers to TEA. You also received an agenda item on TA classroom waivers with more information on all elementary campuses. Here for the CPM, we only will, will report on two. As two of our elementary campuses received a rating of C or less, which are Airport Elementary with a D and Silva Elementary. Silva has a 0%. No classrooms at their building require a waiver as of today because we do have until the end of September to report. Airport Elementary currently is at a 17% meeting the target for the CPM. And those are the classrooms or the number of classrooms needing a waiver and the number of students above the, the waiver in total for the grade level. So we are on track in meeting the CPM target as well. And Mr. Nieto, that is it for my report.
Oh, quick questions. Dr. Jaime?
In regards to the waivers and, and the numbers that, that you presented, you know, what's the plan with that? You know, are we, you know, submitting waivers and leaving it as is? Are we looking at maybe, especially because of the campuses with the D rating, you know, are we, are we looking into maybe bringing that percentage down? What, what's the plan of action for that?
Yes, Dr. Rodriguez. So if you can see, if we focus our attention on Airport Elementary, we have two pre-K3 classrooms that we're submitting, if we were to submit today, a waiver for, right? But with those two classrooms, we're only two students above the classroom ratio, which means each classroom one had one over. So instead of 22 to one, we're at 23 to one. So two right now would not be prudent to hire another teacher for that, but we closely monitor enrollment every day. We receive at two o'clock our classroom numbers for each elementary school.
Okay. Yeah, please do, you know, especially, you know, with those campuses.
Yes. And TA changed its role with classroom waivers. Before we used to submit only once a year at the beginning of the year. Now we submit every time there is a waiver required.
Okay. Thank you.
Coach Quer?
Along the lines of, with that, even though it's a small increase, are those teachers reinforcing each other by team teaching or do we have people that are available to also help in with classroom assignments and so forth?
So in the pre-K classrooms, Coach, we do have a paraprofessional with the teacher as well, as it's an 11 to one. Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes, sir. That was going to be part of my question with the pre-K3 because those are, those are babies. If we, if, are we going to provide an extra aid for that teacher? Because of Mr. Nieto's great idea, when we were on the first couple of days of school, I got the chance to walk through a pre-K3 hallway. And man, we got to pay those teachers more. And so I have a three-year-old, so I, I get it. And one of mine equals 10. So I could, hopefully, can we look into giving a little, maybe an extra aid to those teachers or to that teacher? That's going to get those two extra pre-K3 students?
Yes, we can do that.
We will definitely study it, sir.
Okay. And then on the, on the CCMR, that's, that's great that we're on track. But I mean, as you know, most of our rating comes from the high school and CCMR. So what are we doing to increase that? Not only, and I understand that these are our goals, right? But in order to get the, the A rating for the district as a whole, you know, this has to be very strong and very stout. So are, are we working on anything to not only meet these projections but exceed them?
Yes, sir. Mr. Castillo, last year we actually added an extra early college high school counselor to each of the high school, right? So that increased or doubled our program of students enrolled. So you will not see it in this cohort, but maybe two or three cohorts later because they started with obviously the freshmen. You will see the increment in the associate's degree, right? However, also too, Ms. Gomez, right, is working with our CTE students, our students for career ready as well to ensure that our CCMR points are obviously enhanced or increased there towards that. And our CCMR specialists at both high schools do a tremendous job in just offering TSI opportunities as well, right, to get them college and career ready. Yes.
So as far, so that was just on the early college part. And you touched, you touched a little bit on, on the CTE. Are we going to look into some type, some potential programs or some potential projects to, for certifications? Because that will help on the CCMR as well, right?
Right, correct.
So are there any plans for that?
I, I know Ms. Gomez has been expanding just our career pathways and opportunities.
Ms. Gomez, right over here, the, so we can hear you.
Good evening, all of you. Right now our IBCs as of the last Tapper report was at 78.9%, I believe. So we are very high achieving IBC district.
Awesome.
So for, for the instructors, and so when you look at CCMR, there are 10 indicators. You have to look at TSI, the SATs, the APs, the, there's two ways for students who receive special education services to CCMR. IBCs are one of those 10 indicators. So if you look at the number of students who are being certified through IBCs, it is really what is carrying the weight of CCMR. Now annually, we look to increase by 5%. So for the last, I guess this will be my third year with CTE, we have been setting a 5% increase goal. And we recognize those teachers that, who are able to meet that goal and exceed that goal. So this year we had a huge increase. And some of the teachers are very, the instructors are very creative about how they go about providing different industry-based certifications. So for example, Mr. Villagomez did a tax preparation certification for the first time, I believe, or second time, and certified 175 students. And I told their parents that they were going to charge them for those tax preparations.
That's awesome.
So we're looking at different opportunities. So as Ms. Solano mentioned, we, we are looking at other things. Now, if you look at CT as a whole, there may be some areas where we're spread thin. And so we actually have a meeting forthcoming to discuss ways that we can address more students going through there. But I would say that comparatively, I, we've looked at how we compare to other districts in Hidalgo County. And there are only two districts that exceed our IBC numbers of all the districts in Hidalgo.
That's amazing. People do good work.
Thank you. We owe it all to our instructors.
There you go. As far as the resources and all that stuff, I mean, don't be shy to bring it to the board. I think you'd, you'd find a very supportive board as well with respect to that. Those IBCs, like the tax preparation one, that's going to, whether they do that or not, that's going to be valuable information moving on towards life.
Most definitely.
I'm trying, I'm trying to finalize my taxes. I don't know what the heck it means.
175 kids.
There you go. And then as far as the, the career, I mean, not the career, the military, are we supporting those kids as well that, that want to go to into the military?
Yes, sir. And I know both CCMR specialists in both high schools do an amazing job in recognizing and celebrating those students who enlist in the military. Yes.
But as far as, you know, not necessarily increasing those numbers, but just showing that that's, you know, for the student that's interested in that, that that's an opportunity, that that's something, that's a, a way to go?
Yes. And that's part of their CCMR website that, that the high schools have and some of the events that they have throughout the school year.
All right. And then one last question. Ms. Gomez brought up the, the AP, the AP, I guess, classes or whatnot. Is that something that we really focus on or are we doing more early college? Are we doing both?
Both. Yes.
All right. That's great.
Right. And we also increase our on-ramps sections or participation as well to get the students' TSI ready so that they can have that college-ready point.
Yeah, because kind of speaking on experience, right, as a student, there was no other class that I took, including early college, that got me ready for college. It was an AP class that got me ready. And it also helps you with your SAT and ACT tests and all that.
Yes, sir.
And all that. Well, so yeah, we, if we could keep focusing on that as well for that, for that student that wants to go that route, that'd be great.
Yes. Can I add something to that? May I add something?
Yes.
We have a new CTE AP class. It's AP cybersecurity.
Awesome.
This year. Mr. Mario Palacios is the instructor.
Well, that's going to be helpful in the, for the future.
Very good job.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Well, that, that's all I got, Mr. Board President. And thank you all for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Coach Serna?
Yeah, I just want to highlight, I think, Mr. Ornelas, you're, you're having a signing or someone moving on, on September 24th, I believe, JROTC. So I just want to bring that up because I, I know Colonel, yes, Colonel Cuevas keeps me informed along with Sergeant Valdez. So congratulations to that family. I know you had a few last year, but that's coming up September 24th, I believe. Ma'am, on those waivers that you have for the, for the elementaries?
Yes, sir.
It was only though, all the other schools are no waivers or, I know these were the Ds.
So the ones you see here, Mr. Serna, are based on the CPM, right? On those campuses that are C or less rating, the backup for the classroom waivers has all 10 elementaries listed under the consent items? Yes.
So, okay.
I believe it went out as a board update as well last week.
Yes, 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 I got it. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
And one more question. In the associate degrees, how many programs do we have available for students? Four or five?
Is it four?
Yeah, we have one more, the psychology one plus the mechanics.
Okay.
So about four or five, right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll continue unless any more comments.
On these numbers, on these numbers that we have here, I know there's several with seven and nine.
Yes.
Are we, I mean, we're supporting, right?
So definitely, Mr. Serna, there are two campuses that have, the teacher for that grade level is supporting in another grade level with a consensus of all teachers and administration involved.
But we're addressing, we're helping, we're supporting.
Most definitely.
Okay.
We're good? All right. We'll continue now to board self-evaluation, correct, Mrs. Solano?
Yes.
All right. I, I received information from our board members on our self-evaluation and I will go over them, even though we're not yet where we want to be. But I believe this year, we began this year with several or most of the board members attending the schools during the beginning of the year. And we will continue this year so we can meet that criteria. And part of it is engaging with the community, engaging with the staff, engaging with students. And we're going to have a committee, a student committee that will meet four times a year. I gave the information to Dr. Rivera already. And so that way we can meet with them and we can get information from students. Alongside, I'm going to ask Dr. Rivera in the near future, also to ask the principals to give us an opportunity, whenever you have a parent meeting, I, I happen to go to Memorial Elementary and Margot Elementary for our parent orientation, just to get an idea. And so whenever you have a parent meeting, invite us, you know, of course, one or two of us or three of us will show up. And that we can cover within our LSG program. What, as board members, what are we doing so that our parents can know, staff can know, and even students can know? And so that's something that we're going to work on this year. All right. So under visions and goals, the boards have adopted student outcome goals. We rated ourselves a 12. We've met the majority of, on MEAT's focus, but in order to go to master's focus, we have to have communication with students, staff and community members. And that's almost in every category that we're going to have to do that. And it's a process, but we will do it this year. On the second vision and goals two, the board has adopted go-progress measures aligned to each student outcome goal. And we have, again, in order to get to masters, we have to get the communication piece with students, staff and community members. And we will do that this year. On vision and goals three, MEAT focus nine, the board has adopted the board self-constraints, which we have. All board members and the superintendent agree that the constraints will challenge the organization that we have. And again, in order to receive the top or masters, community ownership of the constraints. That's what we have to present to the community at parent meetings, what our constraints are, what is LSG, what are we doing as, as a, as a board. Vision and goals number four, the board has adopted superintendent constraint progress measures and we have. There we ranked ourselves a four. We met the majority of the CPMs. But again, to get to the master's focus, community ownership, communication with students, staff and community members. So that's something we'll be working with the principals and alongside with Dr. Rivera. Progress and accountability one, the boards invest at least half of its time to improving student outcomes. We rated ourselves 12 out of 15. We're 25% or more of the total quarterly minutes are invested in improving student outcomes as we did a while ago and as several board members asked different questions on academics. We have to get a fifth. We have to get a 50%. So if we can get a 50%, then we can get to master's focus. We continue with progress and accountability two. The board evaluates but does not interfere with progress towards improving student outcomes. And we haven't. We just provide the resources and provide encouragement. An area that we need to improve on is, again, continue with the goals, the CPMs, the constraints, the targets, and the superintendent evaluation. Progress toward student outcome goals and constraints, that's an area that we will continue and we will improve. On systems and processes, the board operates in a way that allows the superintendent to accomplish the vision, which we have. And that, even, we're almost in a master's focus, actually, because in average of three meetings per month, we've only had one meeting per month. An average of two hours per meeting, approximately two to three hours. An average of three other topics per meeting, that's what we've, we've done. Board members receive the final materials to be voted on at least seven calendar days. Actually, now, we have to receive them a little bit earlier, and we have. And again, now the board members will have additional time to be able to read everything that's presented to us before the board meeting. And no edits to the board's regular scheduled meeting three days prior, which we don't unless it's a late hire that we have to present on that day. Advocacy, let me find, where am I? Okay, advocacy and engagement, the board promotes the vision. There, we're at a five. In the near future, we'll continue to do, improve. Students have been included in at least one star governance training or two-way communication that's upcoming. And hopefully, by the end of September, myself and maybe one or two board members will meet with those students as selected by the principals at each campus, two students from each campus. And newly-selected board members have received an orientation on long star governance. Has everybody done that, or Coach Serna? Have you done that yet?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So as long as we get the student portion, then we'll be able to rate ourselves mastery. Synergy and teamwork, the board works and with collaboratively with the superintendent to lead towards the vision. And again, there, we rated ourselves a four, even though we have to improve on that. Maintain an average attendance of 80% or higher through all regular scheduled board meetings, which we have. Agree that all members have followed policies, we have. Agrees that every member has completed all required trainings. And I believe we're almost there. And rather than the superintendent led the completion of long star governors text, tests, which we will take part on that. But the main one is the community, staff, and student engagement that I believe we can focus this year, and then we can be able to rate ourselves a little bit higher. Any comments? So the final rating for right now for 915-2025 is 69 out of 100 points. So we have a, a good portion to go. But I believe that with the community engagement, the student engagement, and the staff engagement, that will help us in the near future. Any comments or questions? So if you agree, each one of you will sign, and then we'll have it ready for the next one. Dr. Jaime, any questions on, on the ratings?
No, you did a great job of explaining, Coach. Thank you, and you've got some work to do.
Coach Grab?
I agree with Mr. Dr. Rodriguez. I think we're going in the right direction. We have shown improvement, and we'll just keep doing our part to get to our final destination of mastery.
Okay, Mr. Castillo. And I think Mr. Castillo can help us a lot, but he just doesn't have the time. I'm not gonna put any pressure on Mr. Castillo.
Mr. Board President, I'm so sorry didn't do my homework this last time. I apologize.
And that's, that's why I didn't ask you, because I know you work a lot. And you have, how many kids to support and take to school and so forth?
Three.
Three, so, okay.
Like I said, one counts for 10, man. But Mr. Nieto, I do want to commend you, sir. None of this would be possible without a strong board president, and, you know, and I know that you're putting in the time on it, and I really, really appreciate you for doing that. Because I do think that this, this program does make us better, and by extension, you know, the district better. So I just want to thank you, sir, for the time that you're putting into it. And I will do better as well, sir. So thank you so much. I appreciate you very, very much.
Thank you. Coach Serna?
Yeah, I have a lot to say, the new guy. No, I, again, I, the advantage I have is getting involved with LSG or being a part of it, is that I wasn't here last year. I wasn't here two years ago. I just came in, and I'm learning on the run. But it is, like, I'm gonna echo what Mr. Castillo said, it does help us. It does make us better. I think, and I'm pointing out to him, we're, we can improve on the synergy and teamwork. And we are, and we are making gains on that. Mr. Nieto, you invited us to the campuses the beginning of the year, had a great time visiting campuses. My thing is, I go around looking, and if I see things that need to be fixed, I'm gonna bring it up. So not that we have a lot of things that need to be fixed, but, and I didn't get to go to all the campuses, but I'm looking forward to before the end of October, maybe make it out to others if it's possible. But, but I really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed communicating with some of the kids there, you know, great time. So I think we're making progress in that. And I know you're, you're getting a group of students to come in, and we're gonna just, you know, talk about, you know, we talked about that earlier this week, or was it last week? And I'm happy to do that, because, you know, we're, we're all educators up here. And, I mean, it just comes easy for me to get along with others and to work together to improve. And, and this is an organization that we can, and we are a second to none. So I'm glad to be here, and I'm glad we're doing LSG.
Thank you. And again, it needs to be our district student-focused. Any district should be student-focused. The students are, the, Dr. Iveta always mentions, you know, boys and girls. Those, the reason you have a job is because the boys and girls that attend schools, you know, and, and teachers need to understand that, too. You know, that the majority, the teachers do an awesome job in the classroom. That's given. Some of them need assistance. That's where US principals and administrators come in. And then, of course, we come in as, what is it that we need to provide? Any type of resources, like Mr. Castillo has mentioned before? And what area do we need to focus on, on the number of students in the classroom, too? You know, because it's, it's tough being a teacher, especially in pre-K3. Once you get to high school, it's a little bit different. But elementary level, that's tough, you know? So, and I commend all the principals, I commend the students, and I commend all the staff members, that day in, the day out, they focus on what they can do for students. Any other comments? Dr. Iveta?
No.
Okay. Ready to go. All right. Okay, oh, we gotta go to the next one. Not for the boards, we don't have to make a motion for that, right?
No. You're, you're gonna go to 882 and 883.
882, approval to amend the LSG go-progress measures and board monitoring calendar effective 25-26, Q year. Dr. Iveta? We have a motion by Dr. Jaime, a second by Coach Grab, to approve the LSG go-progress measures. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against, motion carries. 883, discussion of possible action for the Board of Trustees to consider approval of the Long Star Governance Board Monitoring Report for September 2025. Dr. Iveta?
Again, recommend approval?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime, a second by Coach Grab. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against, motion carries. That would go to item nine, consent agenda or consent items. Give you a minute or two, even though the majority of you, including Mr. Castillo, read them earlier this week. But we'll see, we need to pull any for discussion or for comments.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Board President.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Castillo to approve the consent agenda by it.
Second.
A second by Coach Serna. Any items that we need to pull out? Dr. Jaime?
No, sir, I have none.
Coach Grab?
I have none.
And Mr. Castillo?
No, sir.
And Coach Serna?
No.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll continue on to item 10, discussion items. I believe, let's see.
Number 10, yes.
Right?
Yes.
Update on trainings, conferences, events, and consider future agenda item request by the Board of Trustees, Dr. Iveta?
Yes, none this month?
None?
None. We'll just wait for the October meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Board President?
Yes, sir.
If I may, thank you again for sending us that information about the, about the committees. And I know I had texted you last week, I believe, about potentially calling a finance committee meeting, me and Coach Grab. So I wanted to see, whenever you guys are available, sir, when you're available as well, just to kind of do, get a review on the updates on the stuff that we spoke about at that workshop.
Okay, yes, we'll do that. All right, we'll continue with discussion of possible action. Oh. No action on 108. 118, Maintenance Operations Department. 1181, discussion of possible action for the Board of Trustees to approve the final completion of the synthetic turf replacement project at the Wesco ISD Stadium, CSP number 250339, for additional scope of work as follows. Change order for the unspent allowance and the additional days requested for the project, and final completion of the project. Dr. Iveta?
Yes, on page two, you have the, the credit. It's almost $800. Recommend approval, and the, on the weather days, recommend 45. So recommend final completion of this project.
I move to approve. Second?
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime and a second by Coach Grab to approve the final completion of the synthetic turf replacement project at Wesco ISD Stadium. Any discussion?
Looks very nice.
Yes.
Very, very nice.
Yes.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. 1182, discussion and possible action for the Board of Trustees to approve the final completion of the synthetic turf installation project for the baseball and softball fields at Wesco East High School, CSP number 250806, as follows. Number one, change order number three, CO3, for the unspent allowance and the additional days requested for the project, and final completion of the project. Dr. Iveta?
Yes, on page two, you see the credit, almost $100,000 credit, and they asked for 27 additional days. We approved 26, so ready for final completion. Mr. Americo is here, if you have any questions for him. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Castillo, a second by Dr. Jaime, for the board to approve the final completion of the synthetic turf installation project for the baseball and softball fields. Any discussion? All right, no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. 11B, Business and Finance Department, 11B1, discussion of possible action for the Board of Trustees to consider approval of a resolution adopting the 25-26 total rate of 0.9433 on each $100 of assessed taxable property value with a maintenance and operations or MNO tax rate of 0.7291, and interest and sinking INS of 0.2142. Dr. Iveta?
Yes, we had a public hearing, and the information is correct, recommend approval. We're actually decreasing the tax rate from last year.
Move to approve.
I think we, do we need to say special motion language for this? And it's lower, right?
Yes. Fine, I'll support it.
Okay, I see it. You want me to say, Mr. Grab, or do you want to say?
You have the verbiage.
Okay, I move that the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.9433, which is effectively a 0.51% decrease in the tax rate. Is that the, is that the correct one?
Yes. So we have a motion by Mr. Castillo. Do I have a second?
Yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Castillo and a second by Coach Grab to approve the tax rate of 0.94333 on $100 assessed property value. Any discussion?
This is the first motion that reads like this.
Yes.
That I've been at a board meeting all month. Interesting, good job.
Any discussion? Coach Serna?
No.
Coach Grab? Dr. Jaime?
No, sir.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. 11C1, discussion of possible action regarding contract for Wash Gallegos for legal counsel services. Dr. Iveta?
Yes, they have, they have a new, a new cost, and we're paying 265 per hour. They're, they're asking for 275, a $10 increase, and the retainer is 1,000 per month. So it's, it's the board's call to make on this.
Per year, that's per year.
Per year, I'm sorry, per year.
And this is for special ed, sir?
For special ed plus everything else, because they assist us with different things.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second?
So we have a motion by Mr. Ben Castillo and a second by Dr. Jaime, discussion of possible action for regarding contract for Wash Gallegos for legal counsel services. Any discussion? Coach Grab?
No.
Coach Serna?
No, sir.
And Mr. Castillo?
None.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Mr. Castillo?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Okay. All against, motion carries. 11C2, discussion and possible action for regarding contract for Eloy Subuera for legal counsel services. Dr. Iveta?
Yes, he's asking for an increase from $200 per hour to 250, $50 increase. And this is lower than Wash Gallegos, he's 250. And, and Wash Gallegos is 275. The retainer is the same at $3,500 per month.
So the retainer stays the same?
Yes.
As last year?
Yes. The increase is the amount per hour.
From 200 to 250?
Yes.
Mr. Eloy is here? You got any questions for him?
I think Mr. Spoh has been here, and I don't think his rates have gone up over pretty several years, so I move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Coach Grab and a second by Dr. Jaime to approve the contract for Mr. Eloy Subuera with the raises that we, Dr. Iveta, mentioned. Any discussion? Dr. Jaime?
No, sir.
Coach Grab?
No.
Mr. Castillo?
No, sir.
And Coach Serna?
No.
All right. They had brought up to my attention, and I, as Board President, I, I don't agree that I should sign by myself and just say that he should receive a raise. I believe that we're partners.
I noticed that in the signature page.
Yes, I want to make sure that each one of you, because he's our, our attorney, I want feedback from each one of you. I don't expect for me, myself, to make that decision. You know, it's best when all of us are transparent, and then we approve that item. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against, motion carries. All right, number 12, close meeting pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 8551 and 071, personal matters, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation of contracts for certified professional, non-certified professional, and non-contractual personnel. 12A2, discussion regarding resignations, retirement of certified professional, non-certified professional, and non-contractual personnel. 12B, consultation with attorney regarding 12B, pending or contemplated litigation. 12B2, settlement offer, or 12B3, matter in which the duty of the attorney of the Wesco ISD, under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar Texas, clearly conflicts with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code 551071. It is 718, and we will go into execution. It is 7:18, and we will go into executive session. All right.
Beautiful. Hi, Danny.
I saw you again.
What's that? I know. All right.
We need to make sure that we keep telling Madison on the board to take care of Westlake with the county.
Oh, yeah.
And yeah, so that was bad. He was very helpful. I had a bunch of questions on my part, but he was very helpful.
Oh, he understands, you know, and all those. We need people from Arneca to watch it. Keep representing us.
How are you, sir?
It is 7:50 and we come in an open meeting. Possible action necessary and items discussed in closed meeting. 13B. Discussion on possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation of contracts for certified professional, non-certified professional, and non-contractual personnel. Dr. Rivera.
Recommend approval?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Coach Cuero and a second by Mr. Castillo to approve a recommendation of contracts for certified personnel, non-certified professional, and non-contractual personnel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. 13C. Discussion possible action regarding resignations, retirements of certified professional, non-certified professional, and non-contractual personnel. Dr. Rivera.
Recommend approval? Need to approve?
Second.
Motion by Coach Cuero, second by Dr. Jaime, to approve resignations or retirements of certified professional, non-certified professional, and non-contractual professional. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. A German.
Oh.
So 7:51 and we are done for today. Good job.